I'd like to call to order the February 25th, 2019, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The District New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, set a court of time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Lynda, please have a roll call.
Ms. Byard?
Here.
Ms. Imaresti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Greer?
Here.
Mr. Maggaziner?
Here.
Ms. Nevada-Dan Cola?
Mr. Rizalich?
Here.
Be resolved, pursuant to the Sunshine Act and JSA 10-4-12-13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet closed session to discuss discipline matters in HIV. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session within accordance within JSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I please get a motion to resuscitate executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
(coughs)
Can I get a motion to resume the meeting to closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Hi.
Hi.
Stand. We can stand for the place, please, and take a giant flag up here.
Here. I pledge allegiance to the republic, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, and welcome, everybody. It's so nice to have an audience. We don't have this all the time, so it's nice to have people here with us. Lynda, we don't have any communications on the agenda, anything?
No communications. I did want to remind board members, if you have not done so already, please dial online. I was gonna do my president's report. Oh, yeah. Communications.
Okay, so, so, look, there they are. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation from our board. So does it. The floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We started out the evening with a meeting with the Finance Committee, and what we basically did was go over the audit process, our findings as far as recommendations and suggestions and things of that nature. So what I'm gonna do now, the Finance Committee didn't leave what was in, and in subsequent meeting, you're gonna have a course of action, and what we think. But there was nothing really serious to be worried about. I have with me tonight, my colleague, the partner in charge of the audits within our firm, so if there's any questions that are tinging to the process or of a figure of that nature, please call three. I've come with my usual handouts, and I think everybody has something that looks like this in front of them.
(inaudible)
Just keep my mic.
Okay. Um...
(inaudible)
Everybody stop. Okay.
Yes.
Usually you would have a copy of the audit we award for it. Tonight, because of problems at the state level, we did not receive all the information containing the audit. So that's going to be delivered in not a meeting, but this meeting early next week, that all the members of the Board of Education will be able to learn or to look at what you hopefully learned tonight. But the exhibits that are handed out to you tonight will pertain to the audit. There's usually a record at the top of the page where when you do receive your reports, you'll be able to refer back to. From prior years, you probably remember, I did these handouts to make it a little bit more easier for board members to understand what's happening regarding the finances of the district. We're not here to audit the educational process, we're basically to audit the finances and make sure everything's being done properly. But my attitude has always been that board members should be aware of what's happening to the actual area, and it's a lot of fun to go through the agents of the Highland Park Board of Education. The first exhibit will refer to the audit exhibit P2, when you receive your report. What I do with this particular exhibit is compare it to last year's P2, and I show you where changes have occurred, and what areas were received in our money from, and what areas were expended upon. And I'll probably comment on what I consider to be a positive number, perhaps a negative number, based on our district's whole districts that they have as clients. We presently do twenty-one school districts, so we do have some knowledge. Most of them are in Hunterdon County, so they're a little bit different than, of course, Highland Park is. Now, looking at the P2, we received approximately $800,000 more than we did the preceding year. Biggest part of last tax season. And that's the public, the status in Highland Park, most of the education is funded by taxation. The percentages that were shown are allowed by the state of New Jersey, because your budget cannot be adopted unless approved by the county Department of Education, part of the state. Things that stood out last year, we received an additional $159,000 in equalization being from the state of New Jersey. We had a decrease in special revenue funding, but that's abnormal, because every year there's a different amount of grants that you see was spent. But every amount that we're showing for special revenue was offset by the appropriations on its self-balance, basically. Expenditures, a little bit higher than most of our districts, but I indicated earlier that we do primarily Hunterdon County. All of our Hunterdon County districts have increasing population. That's not the situation here. So even though we're showing increases, primarily because you are having increases in population as opposed to our other communities. Items that have been held in, pretty well, under control is administrative services. We have a reduction in planned operations and maintenance. Everything else, capital, outlet area, that's by choice, basically, each year. It's not part of the operations, but maintenance of your buildings, as far as keeping the structures in good condition, so that will vary from year to year. We have some real low years and some highs. And a slight decrease with the charges, also. Now, the second handout, included in the audit are the section that has ten years worth of financial data. What I'm doing here with this particular exhibit is taking the year 2009, the year ended in 2018, removing the middle eight years. Within that particular exhibit, the J4, you'll see each year with a column by year. Again, I indicated Highland Park is a little bit unique for us because of the increase in student population. You can see at the bottom of the page that there's been roughly a fourteen percent increase in the... It's the exhibit that looks like this in pretty much... There has been a fourteen percent increase in student population. Hunterdon County, mostly, you know, there's a twenty percent reduction. So what I'm showing increases here is the reason. Taxation was up over that period of time, which is high compared to our other districts. But also, look at the state sources. Your taxes are up thirty-one percent over that ten-year period of time, also allowed by the state of New Jersey, it had to deliver those. But the state E is actually a decrease over that ten-year period of time. Reduction in state A will drive your taxes, because your budgets have to be balanced. Expenditures, again, we keep commenting about the increase in student population. Items that are under control compared to our other districts are actually, there's students in instructional-related services, we're showing a twenty-two percent increase there. In Hunterdon County, most of, these are the support services, your libraries, student activities, the child study teams, et cetera. You, in that particular area, have been under control. Plan operation and maintenance, very good. Transportation and tuition have both gone up. The biggest reason for transportation going up as much as I've seen is because of your special education cost. At the bottom of that particular page, you have two budget categories, budget areas that cover tuition. It's the grant monies in your operating budget. So just looking at the top of the, or the middle of the page where I'm showing tuition dash budgeted, that's only the amount of tuition that's being paid by taxes. You also create the tuition out of grant funds, federal grant funds. So in that particular area, Highland Park is a little bit unique. Depending on the type of community you own, your special education costs are higher than most of the other districts. But again and again, with that, with your transportation costs, it's a special type of transportation. The third page of the handout is your surplus analysis. Now, this is a particular area that I'm a little bit concerned about, because surplus is being used here. It's something that you're not aware, I'm sure. But our surplus at the end of the year, we're showing, if you remember the prior years, I tell you how much money you have in surplus, and I need me taking away from you, because you put it aside for various reasons. At the end of the year, you had surplus of $2,631,000. But looking at the exhibit, the right-hand column, I have, in more areas, I checked off, that surplus that you've used in this year's budget. Those numbers total about $1,261,000, so really, the total surplus that we're showing happened that's left right now, is what you've used in combination of these. You didn't use it for non-operationals, but capital costs can offset the taxation approximately a million dollars. Not a particularly good position to be in, something you're being forced into, because your appropriations keep requiring increases. Two years ago, we started using graphs. Now, it's easy to show these to your board. Now, some of these are gonna be good news, bad news. Looking at the first page of the graph, I commented earlier, your taxes have increased over the last ten years, and state aid has gone down. The top half of the page is showing where your revenues have come from. Sorry to say, the big green is taxation. So the biggest quarter, the biggest part of the revenues that came in last year, approximately eighty percent, the agents of taxpayers come out of it. At the bottom of the page, we're showing you where your expenditures are in the year that just ended. About forty percent are going to direct instructional area. We have support services. All the items are identified, they're developed. One of the biggest problems, not only in Highland Park, but all the other school districts, is the trade, which is on the left-hand side, the employee benefits. Looking at the Excel sheet I had before, our three benefits over the last ten years have increased substantially, and again, you're not different than anybody else. Approximately seventy-nine percent increase in employee benefits over that ten-year period of time. Health benefits has been the biggest driver. The second page of the handout is your ten-years' worth of expenditures. At the bottom of the page, the colors are actually showing you what categories of expenditures they are, and it shows you the areas of concern or need, basically. The dark green at the very bottom is your regular instructional area. But again, you remember, our student population has increased over that ten-year period of time. The green, the light green, lighter green is pretty flat, actually, as far as being on a staple. Again, going up to the grays, it's been your fringe benefits for that period of time, which has a substantial increase. The last page of grants is the one category that I was concerned with, is your surplus guys. And if you look at the bottom, your total surplus, you see that, the light blue one, that's the taxpayer who needs your surplus for the current coming year. Luckily, a million dollars. Most of our other communities, it's not that quite as large, they've been able to fold their lines, and usually the dark green, which is the money that's been reserved for capital purposes and whatnot. They're in kind of a more luxury position than you are. But again, they haven't been spending the revenue much, it hasn't assessed with the team out yet. We have, the next chart is tax rates over the last ten years. In your plan, it tends to meet, and not like all of ours, you really have an adequate evaluation, at least in terms of years of life in here, so it's really a unique situation. Because according to your set values, every time you budget or spend $56,000 or $37,000 is one set on the tax rate, but the equalized rates in Highland Park are $1,362,000, which means a $831,000 increase in tax rate. So you really have to be careful when you're doing your budget. Taxes are determined by assessed values, so don't get into a position where, like, when your taxes are up twenty cents. That's really meaningless, because the assessed values haven't moved in the last ten years, so you gotta be careful about the measurement that's being used from the board that's involved. Actually, in your particular case, over the last ten years, school taxes up twenty-four percent, if you look at that, and the town taxes are up thirty-six percent, you measure tax rates. There's an exhibit in reform that you do that, next week, that I'll hack that. So look at the J's, and that gives you the history. And we, again, tax rate here in town is extremely high, but assessed values are extremely low. So we have to keep that in mind when we're talking about tax rates. It's not the tax levy, it's not great. Okay, I think I probably created a lot more questions, and I should speak, but you have any questions, and hopefully I can expand on what I just talked about. There's a lot here, I apologize for not having the reports, it's a little different here.
Anybody have anything for us? No? Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Looks like you're scot-free.
Very good.
Beautiful charts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, so, number nine on our agenda, we have the exemptions of the audit report, but we are not doing that this evening, because we do not have the, we do not have a completed audit report as yet. So nine and ten, we are scheduling for this evening, and I assume they'll be on our board schedules. Okay. So, next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from our public workshop and executive session meeting from January 20th, 2019, and also from the regular public and executive session meeting, February 11th, 2019. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Oh. Yep. Okay. I'm sorry, we're gonna scooch back for a minute. Can I get a motion to table nine and ten?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Do you need to do a roll call? I must have a roll call. Yes? Okay.
Ms. Byard?
Yes.
Ms. Imaresti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Mr. Maggaziner?
Yes.
Mr. Rizalich?
Yes.
All right, so now, we'll move on to view through a little minutes. Can somebody approve those for me?
Yes. I'd like to do it here.
That's all right, that's fine. All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? No? Okay, stay down, if we have a roll call.
Ms. Byard?
Yes.
Ms. Imaresti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Mr. Maggaziner?
Yes.
Mr. Rizalich?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to our student representative report. That looks like it's gonna fall all on your shoulders this evening.
So unfortunately, it is six to nine, so we might have to come. So, Barlow's having major vacations, who can be a society supervisor until next Monday. Barlow Dr. Paul having a student council meeting tomorrow, on the 27th, we will be in the board circle meeting, and a book club meeting, and a punk bar. First, there will be a lead parent on the radio, and then, there was a school on the 21st, there was an open walkover course event, and first, various birthdays appear. At least, well, on the 21st, there was a Black History Month celebration, pop dancing presentation, there was all in prom, it was Doug Maitland, basically, performing over our members. Science Bowl had its competition last week, and went three and two, placed nine, I was four of your teams. And now, the most competition was today, and our team won, placed as a finalist team, and a winner day of a share of books. And on February 13th, the girls' basketball won 40 of 15, Hudson. And coming up tomorrow, there's a boys' basketball game, it's back.
Great. Wow, man, it's beautiful. Anybody have any questions for us? All right, thank you. All right, so we kind of moved, maybe our agenda around tonight a little bit, we moved my president's report up to the beginning, so, if you could bring a couple of our friends back to visit us, because we don't like it when outsiders leave us. So, in the audience this evening, we have two of our former board members, Judy Theopropo and Sharice Richardson. We wanted to bring Judy and Sharice back to thank them for their service to the Highland Park Board of Education and to the district and community as a whole. It's been a long time coming, bringing Sharice back, and I just wanted to stand up just a little bit, just because, you know, board service can be a lot. And I think we all get into it thinking, you know, I can fit it in, it's not a big deal, it won't be that much, and then you just get to it, and you're like, well, no, it's really kind of odd, it really, this is really quite something. And then sometimes, when your own personal life really kicks into height here, it just does not leave that added time to do the board work, especially when you're the kind of person that everyone around this table is, and my friends sitting there in the audience are, where you really want to be in and to fully commit to it and give it your all and feel like you're doing the best job that you possibly can. And at the time that Sharice left, I knew that that was not a great time to be like, Sharice, come on! Like, Sharice needed some time to do stuff she needed to do. So, once Judy left, it was like, okay, now I can bring you guys both back, and we can spend a few minutes thanking you for your dedication and your service. So, I guess I'll start with Sharice, I'm just gonna kind of sit here and do this, and then we'll go to the other bit. Chao. Sharice left us now, almost, it's like a year ago, after almost two years on the board. And Sharice joined the board, you know, when the board was really just sort of starting to coalesce. It took a few years to build cohesion on the board. And our first round of folks to do that were Ann and Rob and, that, Ross Lavech and Michelle, and then Sharice and Rob and Ruth kind of came in on the next wave of that, that really solidified everything. And it's been this amazing process over the last few years to be able to create a board of folks who really want to work with the administration and work with the teachers' union, to move this district forward in a very positive collaborative way. And also with the community as well, and I think that was a really important piece that Sharice brought to the table, was she'd been doing a lot of community work before she joined the board, and brought that community work into her board work, and I think that was a very valuable piece. And then as well, when Dr. Taylor joined us, he really, in terms of committees and things that he works with, really continued that tradition of bringing the community in and making them a part of the conversation. So, I'd be forever grateful to Sharice for that. And then, when Judy joined the board, actually, not that long after, it was kind of like the final piece, when Judy and Mark joined the board, that's when we really became a cohesive board of nine people, all moving, all moving in the same direction. And I talked about this when Judy first left the board, but watching Judy's transformation from kind of really hesitant community activist, not wanting to take on that role, but just kind of feeling absolutely compelled to for her own kids and for the rest of the kids in the district, to becoming somebody on this side of the table, really advocating for all kids in our community, was this really, really cool thing to watch. And I've said this a couple times already, but, you know, Judy joined the board at the time where her kids were just about to leave the district, one was already out and one was about to graduate, so it was at a time when most people are just like, see ya, thanks so much, but Judy just like quadrupled down on her commitment, which was really quite remarkable. And I think that's one of the things I appreciate so much about everybody sitting around this table, is nobody's here for their own kid or for their own benefit, everybody's really in it for all the kids. They don't have kids in the district anymore, kids are starting to age out of the district, we all really put our all in to make sure that we're working for the betterment of all people in the district. So we wanted to bring you guys back to just to give you a little memento of your time with us, and this is kind of silly, I really wanted to make you guys something. Like, one of the really exciting things when you become a board member, for anybody sitting here, someone goofy is taking the walk, but can we get our little nameplates up here? I know they're silly, but they're kind of meaningful for some weird, strange reason. And I haven't given either of them back their nameplates yet, so we kind of turned their nameplates into something. So, you guys can come over here.
Ms. Boosie Gash. Camilla Booth. How's the invite for the ring? Last but not least, my dear Kate Apple. If I don't take a picture, this is what the future leaders of the United States would look like.
Mine.
Time for that right now, I would.
You're like paparazzi or?
Guys.
Can we just get one?
So grab a cupcake or a cookie and I can borrow you a head out. Cause we have a walkie talkie ahead. Now is your opportunity.
Hey, can we ask where is the washing machine? Where are the washing machines?
Oh, so this is so. We have a washing machines.
Where is this?
Is there in the teacher's locker?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a washing machine there.
So one more thing. Which team? First floor?
We belong to the first floor.
Yeah.
Next to the home.
So it's number?
Yes, yes. So people can, if they don't know who the liaison is, they can just call the little school office. The little school office. I'm sorry, they can get me in there. So if someone doesn't know like who the family liaison is, they can just call the little school office.
Yeah, they can call the office. He's a family leader that was in town. And it was the subpoena that went out too. She also went to local businesses and put up flyers. Like in church, there's churches that have it. Maybe stop shop has a flyer. So there's a flyer posted, I mean, you're a resident of the town and you have a child in our school, you have access to the machine.
That's really, really exciting. Wonderful, thank you. Thanks to all.
So the next part of the report is the State of the Education Services. This is a presentation that Mr. Dine backed up by our trustees providing sidekick as the teacher. Every year, I'd like to hand the mic over to Mr. Dine. And before I do that, let's just give you a quick turn. And I have handouts in the slides that are going to you.
And you're giving handouts? You're giving handouts?
Yep.
Easier to see. Good, awesome. Good evening. Thank you very much for having me back again to give our annual State of the Educational Services Department presentation. So as usual, we'll start out with our charts about our enrollment. This chart includes numbers from last year and then numbers from this year for comparison. There, you know, it's a lot to go over, so I just have a few pieces of information that I'll pull out. It's important for you to maybe take a look at. So just quick glance, those areas that are in red are areas that include increases in enrollment. And those areas that are in green are areas that include decreases. Although they're not huge decreases, they are still decreases, so I wanted to note that. What I think is important to pull out for you is for you to take a look at a couple of different things. First of all, I'd like for you to take a look at the classified student enrollment for Bartle last year and Bartle this year. Last year's special unenrollment was sixty-three, this year's special unenrollment is seventy-one. So you can see that Bartle had a bit of an increase. The high school as well had seventy-four students last year, and at this point, we have eighty-seven students at the high school. So both of those schools saw a bit of an increase. And overall, we went from two hundred and thirty-seven classified students at this point last year to two hundred and forty-nine. So those are important numbers for you to pull out. The other thing that I want to pull out is looking at the very last line, the ELL services. We went from ninety-two students receiving ELL services to a hundred and thirty-seven at this point. If you take a look at Irving, they went from twenty-eight students to sixty-five students. So we've had a significant increase in our ELL students. And you can see that, you know, with an increase of forty-five students overall, it's not, you know, one or two minutes. So just important things to take a look at on that particular page. So we'll take a look at our staff by building. There's not a whole lot different here last year to this year. The staffing is pretty consistent across the board. We brought on the additional school psychologist last year, so that's still there. We do have a number of contracted services that we've put into place to help support the related services area and the child study team, so those are all still built in. We still have the same programming called push-in and pull-out depending on the services that are determined by the AIP teams and the needs of the students. So this is a take, this is taking a look at our programs by building. So largely, there's not a huge difference in most of this, but where you do see an increase is in your resource room and in-class resource programs, which taking a look at the enrollment isn't surprising with, you know, more students comes obviously, you know, more sections of resource room and in-class resource and that kind of thing. Bartle saw a more significant increase than the high school did because your numbers at the elementary level for max numbers of students in a class is lower than at the secondary level. So they reach their max in a class, have to split, make a new class before the high school does because of that code dictated maximum in the class. We did however, see a decrease in social studies and science in class resource sections. So it wasn't, it doesn't really balance out, it's still an increase overall, but it was a little bit of a a little bit of a savings there with the decrease in that program. Moving on to the next page, this takes a look at our referrals and our transfer ends. So this is kind of what's come in the door to increase enrollment and what's still coming. So at this point, we've received eighty referrals either from transfer ends or through new referrals. Thirty-three of them have been from parents, twenty from transfer ends or through early intervention, and twenty-three through the school making the referral. So eight of those students were deemed not appropriate to be evaluated. They didn't meet the requirements of the code for requiring evaluation. So eight of those were not tested. Five of the students were found not eligible, thirty-four have been found eligible, and there are still thirty-three students in progress. So just bumping back here to this slide where we already see an increase to two hundred and forty-nine classified students in districts, if all thirty-three of these students are found eligible, we're clearly going to see quite an increase. And we're only about halfway through the year. So it's just kind of important to keep that in perspective that we have grown and we continue to grow. About fifty-two percent of the students that are referred have been found eligible, not considering your transfer ends. Your transfer ends are students that are coming in already classified and were continuing their programming here. So not including your transfer ends, your initial referrals, about fifty-two percent of those students have been found eligible. Last year by this time, we had received eighty-seven referrals. So compared to this year, it's a little less, but that's really not that far off. So that amount of referrals last year was above average, so we do continue this year with an above-average amount of referrals. Our current status this year regarding transfer ends by this point is slightly above our status from last year, but not a lot. It was thirty last year, we're at thirty-two this year. And our parent and school-based referrals remain consistent from last year. We have roughly the same amount of referrals from the school and referrals from parents. Our early intervention referrals are down slightly. We are of course expecting more before the end of the year, this is just where we are right now. Any questions about any of those numbers so far? Okay, so I just want to talk a little bit about what's on our horizon for the upcoming year. Our ABA programming has been growing quite a bit, and we are yet again going to grow in the upcoming year. So at the start of the nineteen-twenty school year, we anticipate about nine students moving from Irving to Bartle that are going to require ABA programming in that particular framework. So because the code only allows us to have six students maximum in an ABA-type classroom, that will require us to open two classrooms at Bartle for the ABA programming next year. So the administration, the child study team are working diligently to make sure that we lay out that framework and we get everything in place and we do everything that we can to make this a successful transition for our students from Irving to Bartle next year when they move up together. We also are doing. Will the Irving classroom numbers decrease with these kids moving up to Bartle? So because we're dealing with a pre-K population, you see a dip and then a rise. So what happens is all of those students move up and then you're waiting for your three-year-olds to come in behind that. So we don't ever know what's going to come through AIP, through early intervention for preschool. So we could see a dip that maintains that decrease, but we also could see like a bunch of kids come through early intervention. So it's almost impossible to know right out of the gate kind of what we're going to see. Our trend thus far has been that at the beginning of the year, we've been able to start with a slight reduction in our ABA programming, but as the year progresses and students are coming through early intervention, we reach a point then where we like halfway through the year have to go back and open, you know, that additional class because our numbers get too high. But we won't know that until, you know, we kind of work the referrals next year, so. So in addition to the fact that we're expanding and moving to Bartle, we also really want to take a look at what we've done so far and how well we're doing that. So we've dedicated a lot of time and an effort to creating gig gig programming that is really effective for our students. So we've really spent a lot of time examining our practices, our procedures, our framework, our protocols, because we really want to make sure that the programming that we're offering maximizes the opportunities for the students through such a framework. And what that looks like for one student may be very different from what it looks like for another student. So the team collectively is working on a lot of analysis of data and information to look at the effectiveness and the best means by which, you know, give this programming to the students. So as we work through our analysis, we may be looking to make some adjustments or some changes in our existing program in the upcoming year, but we're still in that analysis process. So we'll continue to work on that and look at where we want to go in the upcoming year with our existing programming. The other area that we're examining is our behavioral and mental health support systems. Two years ago, we made the decision that we needed to bring on some additional services for this purpose, and we did hire an additional school psychologist to help meet some of the needs of our students. And as we approach the upcoming year, we're really doing some additional research to see whether or not we want to expand that further and create some supportive programming for our students who need this kind of a framework. It's a little different from what we have in place right now. We're really thinking about whether or not we need to add support services to the school psychologist program that we put into place. So we're looking at this information, we're gathering, you know, different pieces of data, different pieces of information. We're considering that for next year, so that's something else that that we'll be looking at in the upcoming years to whether or not we want to put something like that in place for our students and to meet their particular needs.
Can I just clarify, but sure, what does that mean? Supportive programming related to a school psychologist?
So currently, our students who are receiving services from that additional school psychologist are in programming that's like our run-of-the-hill program, our resource rooms, our in-class resource, that kind of a thing. We've found that some of our students might need a little bit more than that. They may need a more overarching therapeutic program, more than just the services from the school psychologist. So we're really taking, like, we have the ABA, you know, we have a behaviorist on staff, and the behavioral services that the behaviorist delivers are direct services between the behaviorist and the student. But for those particular students, they really needed a program that had a very specific framework to meet their particular needs. So we're taking a look at this population as well because we feel like it's, we're at a point where some of our students need more than just the counseling, the intervention with the school psychologist. They may need a more comprehensive program, and we're taking a look at that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll ask some questions.
That's okay, okay. All right, go ahead. So we talked about this already. And actually, now's a perfect time for questions because that's my last slide. And I'm welcome to answer any question you may have. That's okay, that's okay.
Do you mind if I?
Okay. Is my mic working? I think it is, yes. So what does that look like, a more overarching program? Does that mean like a place or a room, self-contained classroom is what's more? Does that just mean that, does that mean someone checking in with them at every class? Or what's, if there's potential to?
So we're actually doing research on different frameworks and programs that are offered. We looked at this before, but we kind of expanded our research a little bit. There are a number of different agencies that offer different frameworks. Or we could do our own framework. So that may mean that you have therapeutic push-in for the entire day with the students, or maybe they start their day with a therapeutic check-in, and they have paraprofessionals maybe that are working with them that have particular training in that area. Or you have check-in, you know, check-in at the end of the day. There's different ways that you can do that. It could be a self-contained class. For example, like our ABA framework, for some of our students, our students are in the ABA framework all day because that's what they need. For some of our students, they spend part of their day in the ABA framework and part of their day pushed out to say a resource room, an in-class resource room, a gen ed setting. So for another student, that may look like that. So depending on where we land on this, if we decide that this is something we need to do, what we really want to do is look at the very specific needs of our students. If the specific needs of our students say that we need a framework that's more in the direction of a self-contained setting, that's something that we'll look at. If we feel like we need a therapeutic overlay that looks a little different from that, then we'll look at that. Do we need additional clinicians to come in? Do we need to have psychiatric services? Do we need to have RBTs, which are paraprofessionals that are trained under the supervision of a behaviorist in behavioral intervention? So there are many different ways to go with this, and we're really just looking at what's out there, what's offered, and what we feel is going to be the best fit for our particular students. Does that help?
Yes, absolutely. What is an RBT?
An RBT is a registered behavioral technician. So basically, an RBT is supervised by a VCPA, a behaviorist, and they're given additional training and experience and so on and so forth in dealing with behavior plans, behavior intervention, behavior shaping, data collection, you know, those kinds of things to work in tandem with the behavior. So when the behaviorists can deliver direct services to the student, an RBT, which is a paraprofessional with that training, can work more directly with the student in a heightened trained capacity than a paraprofessional who's not an RBT.
I see, thank you. So we're talking about psychiatry support services, we're talking about behavioral interventions.
Not always.
No, we're not.
Not always.
I mean, it sounds a lot like, like sort of ABA.
Yes, right.
Not necessarily about discreet trials, but you're talking about like plans, students get rewards, and you know. Is that, is that, or are we talking about like support for a student who suicidal? I just try to figure out.
It could be, it just really, it just depends on the student's profile. So sometimes you may have students that need a therapeutic intervention that don't necessarily have those outward behaviors that you might even see of, you know, throwing themselves on the floor, or throwing their books around the room, or, you know, whatever that may look like. Some students have a profile like that, some students don't. But they need more therapeutic intervention than just your resource room, your in-class resource room, you know, that kind of thing. So they need more services than their, you know, that they might currently be receiving to be successful. Because we want them to be successful not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well when dealing with their peers and, you know, all of those different pieces. So honestly, one child's profile to another can look completely, completely different.
I was wondering like how you, if they're also individual, you know, what kind of staff could you possibly hire? And sort of cover everybody?
Or come back.
No, I mean, I was just thinking even just what you mentioned, and I feel like I've seen this somewhere else in some framework, but I can't remember what. Just the idea of the daily check-ins, those daily morning check-ins I've seen. And I feel like I've read, like, it's remarkably.
Yes.
Helpful.
Get you ready for the day.
It's not getting to have this.
I think we talked about it, I raised it, I believe.
Maybe it was a video somewhere, a sit-down or something?
Yeah.
You know, you just, you have your person, you know, like, you have your person that you check in with every day who kind of helps you set your tone for your day.
Well, no, no, no.
No, it's a little different.
Yeah, is that more therapeutic?
Yeah. But not necessarily bothering like the students with like severe problems, you know, students are having any kind of.
Well, they can see how we'll be. We're more likely helping for students who are having particular problems. If they have a psychologist that they can check in with every morning, who knows what their issues are. And the psychologist could be, is trained to deal with a wide range of issues. So I mean, you don't need a whole bunch of different staff members. If you have a school psychologist who's, you know, with their soul, they should be able to deal with a bunch of any adolescent issues that are.
Right, you know, it sounds like you're talking about some kind of more unified program. A therapeutic classroom, I just kind of get at what. And you're not going to do a bunch of students with depression in the same room, that wouldn't be really nice, right? Press me to look at this. If somebody's not an expert, I'm trying to figure out what, but there are a few different programs. Thank you very much for clarifying. With this student in the ABA room, I assume that if, having had my own family members who have experience with ABA, I mean, the goal is that at some point, students hopefully will transition to a more inclusive setting, right?
That is, that is the hope.
That is the hope.
Absolutely.
Speaking as a low-end expert, I'm sure that's probably easy to achieve. But these have happened? Is the, are students eventually becoming able to?
So we have some students that actually started in our ABA program and they're completely transitioned out of the ABA program right now for two years. They're now completely in ICR settings and.
What's ICR?
In-class resource. I'm sorry, I. So in the in-class resource setting. So they're in the gen ed setting with their gen ed peers, and they have a second teacher who's, you know, assisting with the special education instruction and that kind of thing. So we do have some students that are completely transitioned out of ABA already, and they're into gen ed settings. We have some students that do a split day. They spend part of their day in ABA, they spend part of their day in a resource room, in a class resource room, gen ed setting. So some students, they spend a small portion of their day in ABA, and they spend the bulk of their day out. Other students have like a fifty-fifty split. So it really is according to what they need. And then we have other students who aren't ready for that yet, and they're still a hundred percent of their day other than specials and lunch and that kind of thing is in the ABA classroom. So this, you know, we have the great luxury, when we have programs like this in our district, we have the great luxury to be able to make that look like whatever we want that to look like. So if I have a kid who's ready to push out, we push out. Those are reasons to keep them in because we, you know, unlike an out-of-district placement where one hundred percent of the students in that setting are students with disabilities, I have a whole school available right there. So when I have a student who's ready to go and the case manager says like, we really would like to have an AIP meeting because we think the student's ready, do it, go, we have it, let's do it for the students. So, you know, we have, we have the luxury of being, being able to do that.
That's wonderful. That's one thing is, again, instead of laying board members, many of us, you know, feel strongly about inclusion. We worry that having a program with ABA room or hiring more people for more ABA classes, that we will sort of commit to this ABA program. You know, once you hire staff, it's like every day you're. Once you hire somebody, that program is in place. So I just want to make sure that we're.
Doing your due diligence.
I know you're doing your due diligence. That makes sense. I don't want to check up on them. I just want to make sure for my own.
Sure, of course.
These are fine, that if we are moving kids out of these programs where possible, then we'll continue to sort of put the pressure on to move towards a more inclusive setting.
Right. And you know, the other great thing that we have is reversing, we do that as well. So we have non-disabled peers come into the classroom and engage in activities. If we have students who aren't ready to push out to say a larger classroom, we can bring some of their non-disabled peers into the classroom and do it in the ABA setting and have them engage in activities. So there's lots and lots of paths for us to take advantage of, and we do take advantage of that whenever possible. So we do the same thing with our, with our glow program at the middle school and the high school. You know, we have students who have the same kind of profile. Some students have the bulk of their classes with the glow program. And then we have other students that spend part of their day glow, part of their day, you know, out of resource rooms or in class resource. And then we have some students that move glow for a couple of years and they're not with the glow program anymore. They're out of resource rooms and gen ed settings because they were ready for that. So we, we are very, very fortunate.
That's great.
I just have a really quick question about the increase in the ELL population at Irving. And do you have a sense of what's driving that or?
I wish I had that answer for you. I just know they've just.
So is it across the board kind of, or coming from a particular country or is there?
I don't, I don't have those specific details for you. I know that we have seen an increase in certain native language populations because we.
That's a much better way of saying it.
We, we have like cut-off numbers. Or if your numbers are under this, you have one set of rules. If your numbers are over this, you have another set of rules. So we have certain family languages that now have crossed that line. We're now in this set of rules because our numbers are a little higher. So I know that we have had that particular increase, but I didn't cover parenthood with specifics on, you know, who, which native language populations have seen the increases.
Is it safe to say? Is it safe to say that our Asian population has increased particularly those who speak traditional Chinese language?
So that's one of our populations that's over that number. If you're over a certain number, you have, you know, this set of rules over here. Our Chinese-speaking families are in one of those groups, as are our Spanish-speaking families. So last year, we increased above that number. So now our Spanish-speaking families are also in that, that additional group that has seen an increase to kind of to over, going to the higher.
So I mean, I don't remember seeing any staffing issues. We're still, with our current staff, we're able to handle that. I mean, I'm like, I'm feeling.
We're doing our very best. So at this point, we're, we're meeting all of our mandates. We're not, like, we're not out of compliance, we're not having any issues like that. But it is definitely something that Dr. Taylor and I have been in discussion about, the potential for considering a potential increase in the ESL staff. Because it's, I mean, as you can see, like Irving a low.
Yeah, it's tremendous.
Is a significant.
And that's a population that's, you know, you don't want huge ratios for, you know. Chosen, or a little less people who can deliver language.
Just in the hearsay regime, I know someone who read to the children today at Irving, and a third of the students in the class were taken out for ESL and were not there for the, for the reading, which was kind of sad and unfortunate because the kids really appreciated it. But the, they were not our Asian population that were taken out. It was other languages. Apparently, at least in that class, the Asian kids spoke English. So I don't know, I don't know. It's huge numbers, it's crazy.
Yeah.
It's crazy. I did want to ask you about the numbers. What, what sense do you have as, as this pushing our costs so much higher in the state not helping us in virtually any way, of why we are seeing such a large increase in ABA, in out-of-district placements, in the, in the needs of disabled students in coming into our district and in our district? It could be, I mean, as example, it could be state rules, it could be everyone says Highland Park is great, let's move there, we'll get better services. It could be lots of reasons, but it is the kind of thing that, given that all of the, all of the costs are borne, virtually all of the costs are borne by local taxpayers, and we can't increase the taxes above that two percent increase, it is the kind of thing that could bankrupt our district. Do you have any sense of where? Do you have any sense of, of where, why this is happening, especially at the very lowest rates? Is it the, is it the, uh, I think it's called EIO, the, uh, the doctors and hospitals identify children earlier? Is it some combination of those things?
So I wish I had a definite answer for you, which I don't. What I can tell you is that, um, as you mentioned, we are not, it's, there's a twofold component here. One is the, the number of students, but the other piece are the needs of the students. And just increasing numbers alone isn't the full picture because we do have a lot of students that are in need of significant amount of services. And we want to make sure that we provide them so that the students can be successful. But it, it has a dual impact, that you're increasing your, you're increasing your numbers, but you're also increasing the services that are needed. So this is something that we talked about at our county's, county director's meeting. Like, is everybody seeing this? Is, you know, I have to tell you, across the board, every director that I talk to throughout the county is seeing the same kinds of increase in student numbers, in student needs. So we're definitely not, um, unique in that respect. We've not, like, sat down and looked at specific numbers. Well, I got this percentage of increase, what kind of, you know, we didn't look at that kind of a thing. But everybody across the board is really seeing this kind of an increase. So, and, and nobody seems to really know why, just that it is. So there's lots of research to be done by that, but nothing that's really been completed to be able to say, you know, anything that's going to give me any kind of answer to that question. So my apologies. But, but we, we definitely are not the only ones.
But the early interventions, for interest in, in, for example, I never heard that term before about eighteen months ago.
Okay.
I certainly didn't hear about it twenty and thirty years ago, but even, I'm going to say, my first eighteen months on board as fire ranger chair, never heard about early interventions until we had meeting after meeting after meeting of all these early interventions coming.
Right.
Is that new?
No.
No.
Okay. It just seems, it just seems that the numbers have enormously increased.
Well, and as you've pointed out multiple times, Mark, the state used to help a lot more with these costs.
Yes, yes.
And this is something that I've been thinking a lot about lately, and I would actually like us to, if we could, without too much, you know, over time taking, take a look at the difference, maybe over the last ten years or something, of what our costs were, how much was reimbursed by the state, and then take a look at last year, what our costs were, how much was reimbursed by the state, so we can start making this case to our legislators. I mean, you know, I mean, we go to our legislators all the time and, you know, say we don't have enough money for things. But I feel like we need to start very concretely making the case of how difficult this is at this point. And of course, we want to provide the services all children need and deserve. But as you've said, I mean, you get to the point where you're at a breaking point. Like, how, how is it sustainable? So
We saw the, we saw the number in the auditor's report tonight.
Right.
Uh, over ten years, we've lost money from the state. We've lost three, four percent.
But that's a goal, you're all
Well, but that's the state aid number. A large portion of
But I don't know if that includes the extraordinary.
Uh, may
Or if that's just our, if that's
It may or may not, I don't know. I thought it did. But, but on top of that, our tax burden costs have gone up thirty-one percent. So we need, so, so if, if nothing else, there's thirty-one percent difference. If my memory is correct, twenty-five years ago, instead of getting twenty percent back, twenty-five percent back for special education funding, we were getting seventy-five percent back from the state. Eighty percent. And especially transportation, we're getting huge amounts back.
Yeah.
If not all of it from the state, that's a tremendous difference. But they can't find money for much of anything. So, so we have a problem.
Yeah.
Serious, serious, a serious, serious problem.
Just come up to the mic if you do.
Okay. Mark, can I answer your question about early intervention?
Yes.
Many years ago, early intervention used to be more state funding. So therefore, families were availing themselves early intervention, if possible. Once state funding went down, families who didn't have the resources couldn't avail themselves early intervention. So now we're getting the kids for free public school, the three who haven't had as much early intervention as they had before. So the state funding has really, really impacted early intervention services.
Right, in a different, in a, in a, in a different way even than funding back to the schools.
Right, now, now it's a percentage that the state funding impacted before it wasn't.
And, and, and mind you, we, the finance committee, everyone knows, we toured those classrooms, and what's going on is wonderful, and those students need the help. That's not really the issue. It's feeling, this feeling I get, and I think all of us get, and you guys certainly get, of being overwhelmed by the needs and the costs. And yet we can't even, even if we wanted, we can't raise funding, so it has to come from somewhere else. It's crazy.
We spend a lot of time in three o'clock. A lot of time.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And that does conclude Mark's report. Have a great night, Citi.
Good night, thank you both so much.
Thanks for your time.
All right, um, and since it is, we're getting to our board, um, committee reports at nine o'clock. I will remind everyone that we have gone over the majority of the agenda items, so we don't need to go over them again. And we will just go over anything that's too, maybe speedable terms. So with that, we'll start with curriculum and instruction. Michelle?
Oh, okay, so curriculum has two field trips. So it's like curriculum one, the HEB standard work, that's number two, from December. And number three, the school calendar for the school district year 2019 to 2025.
And that is it. That is it. And I have to admit, I did not get a chance to take a look at the calendar, so
I glanced at it.
Yeah.
Scott table that.
Scott, Scott. The conference?
Why don't we just ask me something?
Oh.
Oh! This is not your cupcake hour.
We can't do the calendar tonight. I didn't even get a chance to look at it.
Okay. No, no problem, wait till March.
Yeah. We'll do that. We'll, yeah, yeah, yes.
And I think this would benefit if we tried to start it a little bit earlier.
Yeah. Yeah, and with it not being on the last one and it get, yeah, but We need to wait until March. Yes, we will have to wait until March because we need to get a chance to look at it. Um, okay, well, that was BD.
Uh, I do have a question on the, on field trips.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at the DECA field trip. I mean, I absolutely love DECA, but just when I see a field trip where it's, uh, the cost is thirty-eight thousand dollars, sixty-six hundreds is paid for from the store, and then the remainder of being paid for by the students, and trying to figure out how much that is per student, where it's like a thousand dollars per student, roughly, you know?
It doesn't always cost that much. We, we put a placeholder number in there, because with that, every year, since we've run out of these trips, we offset that with additional fundraisers between now and the trip.
Okay.
Best that we can.
And I, and I think it was last year, I got in something close to home, like at Kean, and there was like ninety students went to it, where, you know, I'm looking at this one where it looks like it's thirty students, and I'm wondering how many students, when it was, I think the last time they flew somewhere was down in Georgia, four or five years ago. I wonder
It was in Nashville.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's any sort of disparity between whether they traveled further and the number of students that can actually attend and repeat, whether there's any sort of drawback to those students who can't, you know, you know, whether it looks worse on their college transcript or, or their high school transcript, trying to get them to college. And whether or not, I mean, I love the idea that they're able to go to Orlando, Florida. You know, I think it's great, but I'm just wondering if there's some kids that are missing out on the opportunity, but I guess looking at somewhere that's further away and an option that's
So I, I, so the sense I get is that every student who wants to go goes, or close to that. However, I can get back to you with confirmation that unless Mr. Harper, who is one of the DECA advisors, wants to chime in, right, to put you on the spot. The question is, do all the students get to go to the DECA national?
No, they have, they have to qualify. So whatever event that they're in, they need to place in the state tournament to be able to go there. Um, so for like, say it's brought up the store for being one of those things, that's a specialized project where they have to, a group of kids take that on, and they present a thirty-page paper and presentation for it. So it's not, you're a member of DECA, you get to go to nationals. It's more of you qualified at the regional level, the state level, then qualified for the national level. So it's not a, like, the numbers you're using, ninety for Kean, Kean's the regional. Um, so that's just central New Jersey. And then that moves down to Atlantic City for next week, and that's the entirety of New Jersey. And then the qualifiers for that changes by event. That's who qualifies for the national tournament.
Okay. And then, um, one other quick question, just in terms of, uh, I'm looking at something in previous times where, uh, we had a trip like this. I saw that the board paid for a portion of the, uh, the trip. Or I think it was, it was a portion differently. There was, um, and I was wondering, does the, does the board in any way have any ability to, like, kick something in if there are the students who are going that we've got to outoffset, so even if it's a small portion of the cost? You know, because I, we, I know we've done it before. I'm just wondering how we determine what, or it does kick money in for field treatment, how, you know, it's on a small, you know?
I know we can put into our budget funds to offset costs. Linda, have you ever had a request to provide additional money that won't be budgeted to offset costs for students who don't have a free release pledge, can't afford to go on certain trips?
No, I believe that the student funds for that particular activity usually have a little bit of
So sufficient to provide the cost?
The district has to, by district, but we have this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and then, so there's fundraising. And then there's also grants from foundations and stuff.
That's true.
Yeah, it must be
For, for students who, for travel.
For the Mexico trip that the kids are taking tomorrow, Citi.
All right. Thank you. Um, so we'll move on to finance, Mark.
Yes, thank you. So, uh, items one through thirty-four are all either items we discussed before or are new on the agenda, and have to do with, uh, board secretary reports, certifications, et cetera, that have to do with the auditors having come and gone through the records. And then, so that we know we can approve these because we have it over extended expenses and certifications, et cetera. And this is, isn't unusual for this time of year. Um, items thirty-four, uh, I'm sorry, item thirty-five, we went over last time. Additional, there's, uh, professional musicians, carpenters for the spring musicals, beach therapists, and a investigator for some specific work that the district needs. Um, items thirty-six through thirty-eight, we went over last time. Item thirty-nine is an out-of-district displaced student placement to the same public schools. Item forty is a non-public school security aid purchase that we don't pay for. And that's the whole list.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody have any questions for Mark? Okay, uh, so we'll move on to personnel, Anne.
All right. Personnel is almost all stuff that we've looked at before. Let's see, the new items are pretty self-explanatory and generally pretty confidential. A blended extension, sort of term of disability. My personal, personal perspective, welcome to Lisa Brown, new para, who, uh, used to work at the Montessori School down the street. She's a wonderful teacher. Um, let's see, we have, sorry, computers jumping around. Uh, some Schedule B, designations, fighters, volunteer coaches. Uh, there is nothing controversial on here, not already discussed. Nothing's gonna get controversial on here anywhere. We had a discussion of the coaching situation last week. So we'll go to the back there. And yeah, that's it. Just self-explanatory stuff and things we've already discussed.
All right, sounds good. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Anne? On any of the personnel items? All right, so we'll move on to policy, Mark.
Yes, so we have a new policy for first reading, which is a complete provision to our students who suicide prevention policy, as I said last time, I think we discussed it briefly. Um, so this is, um, based on a policy that we received from Amy
Sabel.
Sabel. And, uh, which she's presented to us. I re-revised, I went over with the committee, uh, and then went over with Amy, and Amy sent a bunch of great suggestions to it. Uh, so this has all of those. It's far superior to what we have in every way. And, uh, so I, uh, strongly endorse that we move forward on this and really will make a difference to the district. Policies with second reading, we did go over before more than once. Uh, all three of them, um, have, have been gone for. They all make sense, the changes make sense, some are more significant than others. Um, in, uh, in tandem with the attendance policy, we will be looking over the length of this policy at our next meeting. But all three of these make sense. And I, I did get some changes, which I, I, I put in, I think, from our legislative meeting there, I was saying, I'd like to include this.
Excellent. Okay, anybody have any questions for Mark?
Uh, yeah, so just for the student suicide prevention policy, uh, under the parental, not to be involved in on the five-seven, uh, policy, it's, uh, integrated for students, it says adverse suicide risk, main suicide risk. Uh, so the parent should be informed as soon as this trackable, you know, for this year. Uh, so, um, who will be assessing the student's risk of suicide, and what
You're asking a question about policy?
Yeah.
Because, oh, we haven't gotten
Oh, is that?
No, no, no.
No, no, this is it. So which page, please?
Uh, page five-seven, uh, if the five-three, I'm sorry.
Five-seven, oh, I have a printed version, page five.
It's, it's not labeled, uh, labeled.
What section is the
Principal, doc, we didn't
Parent, oh, here it is. Okay, thank you. And then, student, parent, and, um, principal designated mental health professional. Refer to the child study team. Oh, so who, who is assessing the risk? Scott, is that the school psychologist? Yeah, we're getting the school psychologist. There is, is a school psychologist in every school. We actually have two, one for the elementary schools and one for the upper grade schools. So those individuals will assess, be part of that assessment team.
Okay, uh, if there isn't anything else from Mark, Leanie is not here to give us a report for Everybody in Excellence, I don't remember. Did you guys meet?
We have, we actually have a meeting that is scheduled for this Thursday.
Oh, for a Thursday, okay, wonderful. So we will catch up with you guys, um, next week on that. And we don't have anyone here to deliberate or comment, so I think we can safely move past that. Um, so we'll move straight on to our core action items. Uh, Michelle, could you move the curriculum and structure items?
Sure, I'd like to move items number one.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm in table number three.
Oh, right, right, yes, we're tabling three.
So rolling numbers one to and tabling three.
Yes, like, right, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No, staying down with the several call?
Miss Byer?
Yes, number one, I'm staying from number two.
Mr. Marsting?
Yes.
Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Greger?
Yes.
Mr. Magzana?
Yes.
Ms. Vanant and Colan?
Yes.
Mr. Ruslovich?
Okay, Mark, could you please move the finance specifics?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through forty.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
Seven.
Any discussion? Nope, seeing none, we'll leave this at our call.
Inspire?
Yeah.
Mr. Maruski?
Yes.
Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Greger?
Yes.
Mr. Magzana?
Yes.
Ms. Vanant and Colan?
Yes.
Mr. Ruslovich?
Yes.
Okay, and Anna, could you please move the personnel items?
Uh, yes, I would like to move, oh, I lost my agenda.
Gary, Gary.
Oh, thank you, all of the items.
No, just the-
Twenty-eight.
One through twenty-eight.
Twenty-one, sorry. Oh, sorry. One through twenty-eight, please. Thank you, Mark.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, seeing none, we'll leave this at our call.
Inspire?
Yes.
Mr. Maruski?
Yes.
Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Greger?
Yes.
Mr. Magzana?
Yes.
Mr. Ruslovich?
Yes.
Okay, and Mark, back to you for policy.
Yeah, I'd like to move items one and two.
All right. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Nope, seeing none, we'll leave this at our call.
Ms. Gallon?
Yeah.
Mr. Maruski?
Yes.
Ms. Col, uh, Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Greger?
Yes.
Mr. Magzana?
Yes.
Ms. Vanant and Colan?
Yes.
Mr. Ruslovich?
Yes.
Okay, and, you know, Equity and Excellence items, but I will take a moment to say happy birthday, Moni. Hope you're enjoying your birthday.
She's surely watching.
Surely, surely she isn't home watching us right now. Well, when she watches it later, clearly tomorrow, because she'll want to know what happened, then what a pleasant surprise.
The one night without live stream.
All right, so we will move swiftly through our board liaison reports.
So we have had a trend alliance meeting, that next one is Mark.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Greger, any activity on yours? Nope, nothing?
Nope.
Got the, got the quiet, the quiet relates oppositions. Rob, anything from the head foundation?
Head foundation met this past week. They reviewed, I think, eight or nine applications for grants. I believe that there was discussion, significant discussion through the evening, and don't know that those were, were they voted on, I'm not sure they had-
Yeah, they were, and, and I think just everybody got what he or she wished for.
Oh, wonderful.
Except for one particular grant, for whatever reason.
So they are actually having some good success in terms of their mailing, and they have, they added, I think people are aware, there was a dinner, a Pino's night, that was an additional fundraiser that took place a few weeks back. That was, that did pretty well, and they're gonna do something else, I think that is going to be June first, at Fato Maracan, I don't know, people like that, that's a great place.
No, I haven't been there yet, I have a meeting too, so that'll be a good excuse to-
And then they're also going to have their standard spring fundraiser. So, you know, they're, they're pretty active, they're doing a lot of stuff, and, you know, good meeting, yeah.
Well, we greatly appreciate the assistance. Anna, anything from the commissions for universal access?
No, I am waiting for agenda, or sorry, for a calendar for the years meetings.
Okay. Excellent. Nothing from the library? Okay. Uh, I don't have anything from shared services. The mayor assures me that this is a active, still an active committee, but they haven't met in two years, so. It's the most inactive active committee I've ever- Ruth, still nothing. CPAC, nothing. Oh, I'm so sad. And Leakey's not here to let us know what any things going on with parents and students of color. Anna, anything available with human relations?
Uh, our meeting this, last week was canceled for snow. I'm just looking at minutes from the meeting in January, on which I was nine until eight ten. I see there's a note here, someone, they were kind of talking about volunteer opportunities, and having someone volunteer to help with, or take some kind of Ashland credit recovery? Is that a credit recovery program in the high school? We don't, we, volunteers, we don't, sorry, those, those are teacher led.
They're teacher led.
Perhaps this person was talking about something else.
Sorry.
I will endeavor to find out. That'll explain.
So is Ashland still running, how do parks, human relations commission, and state-
As far as I know, is, there's not been a transition yet, but I believe Ashland's talking about it.
But there will be.
I believe so.
Gotcha. Because I was gonna say, that's a lot, a lot of person to take on.
At least we speak by, I don't know, decisions.
All right. Michelle, anything interesting for the board health?
Uh, yes, actually, Mark is right, it's a very active committee. So we talked about many, many things, I won't bore you, but the two things that I thought were pertinent to us was that the board health actually purchased Teen Pep t-shirts, who were all-
Oh, it's nice.
Yeah, so I got to see one of them, my daughter's friend-
You got a sneak preview?
Yeah. Um, my daughter's friend, who is a Teen Pep senior from Alice, she wore the t-shirt to my house, and it's a picture that's hand drawn, Yechetin drew all the Teen Pep teachers, I don't know what they're called.
Yeah, so they're teachers.
Yeah, so each, each kid was animated for, you know, like, oh, I have, I have a style of teachers, and it's great, so, so that was basically the board health, they got t-shirts.
That's very nice, thank you.
And it says on the back, it's the best sex band we've ever had.
Oh!
Yeah, yeah, so that was cheeky.
Wonder how that was good.
And then they talked about how they will be choosing, maybe changing the procedure for choosing their reps from high school next year, so both our reps, Marsia and Zane, are going to graduate, of course, and so instead of just having the traditional word of mouth, where Marsia and Zane would go to their friends and say, hey, you know, Junior's somewhere that needs to be on the panel, it would be, it's two ancillars, but they were saying that procedure, so what they're gonna do is, they got a, like, it's already gotten in touch with, with Asmoa, to talk about the sources of strength of students-
Right.
Who might be able to, you know, yeah, some of those traditional voices.
Cool.
Yeah, so I thought that was really great, and then I am kind of heavily on, we're getting some middle school students, they want eighth grade reps as well. So, yeah, so middle school health-related issues will be represented at the board health, as I mentioned here.
Fabulous. All right. Lovely report.
And Lucinda, actually, Lucinda Holt is helping to part with those.
Oh, right.
So seventh graders, anyone who's listening at home, it would be the people who would say, yeah, we're seeking that.
All right, that was it. Thank you, ma'am.
Could I follow up on something in my report?
Yes.
I believe we were talking about credit recovery as in financial credit recovery.
Ah!
So I will keep going forward, perhaps there'll be something coming up for community members who are interested in that kind of credit recovery.
There you go.
So, let y'all know.
That makes more sense.
Yes, it does.
All right, Mr. Ross Levitch?
I do not have anything to report for the green team, so.
Got nothing for the green team, okay. Mr. Greger, I'm assuming is the same for capable TV advisory. Actually, I don't have anything for delegates to New Jersey's school boards, I'll have to take a look for our next meeting when, because the next one is in May, so, I don't know, I don't know that we've had any pertinent issues comes up, a couple pertinent issues come up that we would want to bring to the delegate assembly, but we could certainly toss that around in the next meeting and see if there was something that we wanted to think about. I haven't seen much from middle school boards associated with anything.
Yeah, I know there are, I know that there was something scheduled coming up at late March, I believe, but I don't recall what it is right now.
Well, if it looks exciting, let us know.
Will do.
Okay. So, under old business, I just put an update on the graduation exit exam legislation, and for once, I have something exciting to report. So, one of the reasons I'm dressed all in black today is because I went to the State House, with a group of other folks from across the state who helped out with Saber Schools New Jersey to, we just stood in a hallway, basically, outside of where assembly members were gonna be caucusing before their vote today. There was an assembly vote scheduled for today, and on their agenda for voting was this, was the Assembly companion bill to the Senate bill, and it's already passed, the bill passed in the Senate by one vote. So just as a reminder, what the legislation would have done was change the exit exam requirement from a single test given in the eleventh grade, which was, in the legislation, it was written to be a test of basic skills, to test or tests given in any grade, that could be whatever test, anybody wanted. And the way we were able to get out from underneath, park being the exit requirement, was that it didn't comply with the statute. So a couple of real swell legislators just went, well, let's just change the statute then, let's just make the statute comply with regulations, instead of going back and rewriting regulations that comply with the statute. Statue hasn't been looked at, studied, touched in over forty years, so our argument is, before you change the statute, maybe you should talk to, I don't know, some educators, some students, some people who have actually been impacted by this legislation, before you just take it upon yourselves to change how we, how we assess students readiness for high school graduation. So the bill passed the Senate by one vote, and today would have been the vote of the assembly, and if you're saying, so Saber Schools New Jersey, we had had calling campaigns, call your legislators, write your legislators, go sit in your legislator's office, do whatever you gotta do, tell them you don't like this bill, and then we went today and stood in the hallway and talked to them as they walked into the caucus room, and handed them stuff, and harassed them, and blown the hold, and pulled the bill. So it's making me pretty exciting. It's like one of those, like, few days where you're, like, with your pillow at night, absolutely exhausted, but you're like, actually feel somewhat encompassed. And that doesn't happen very often, so I'm kind of excited about that. So, at least for now, I could come back next month completely dejected, because it's, like, the bill is, like, you know, zombified, which they sometimes do when it's come back, but at least for now, there is a clear path to graduation for current seniors and juniors. The court case that basically declared these regulations that Christie put into place illegal, the parties have come to an agreement, so there's an agreement now between the Department of Education, or basically between the Murphy administration and the Education Law Center and the ACLU of New Jersey, where there's, the current seniors and juniors can use the existing paths to graduation, so if you've already taken part and passed, or you've taken, haven't taken part, or you haven't taken, or you have taken part and haven't passed, you can still use any of the other exams, you can use the ACT, the SAT, the ASV, whatever they are, you can use that full, you know, s- morbus board of exit exam options to graduate, and this gives two years for the department to come up with regulations for some current sophomores and freshmen, and then hopefully we can have a more sane exit exam department moving forward, so.